I'm going to call the meeting to order, please. My watch says it's four o'clock, so we'll start promptly on time. So Fran Inman, California Transportation Commission. And I would like to open the public hearing, or the hearing, to receive public comments on the proposed San Mateo Express lanes. So with that, Susan, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Alvarado, Commissioner Burke, Commissioner Dunn, Commissioner Gardino, Commissioner Gometti, Commissioner Inman, Commissioner Keigho, Commissioner Van Canenberg, Commissioner Tavelloni.
Okay, we're here. So if we look a little out of whack, we are using a microphone that really isn't projecting. So this is for the video. So hopefully, everybody who's watching us remotely will be able to hear, but we're not typically quite so awkward. So here we go. Anyway, just a little overview, those of you that might not be familiar with the commission, but we're 40 years old, 40-something, I guess, a little over 40. It's a statewide independent body. We program and allocate transportation funding across the state. We advise and assist the Secretary of Transportation and the legislature in policy recommendations. And also, we approve tolling facilities, thus the reason for this meeting today. So on July 2 of this year, the commission received an application for tolling authority on the US 101 in San Mateo County. The commission plans to consider whether or not to approve this application at its regularly scheduled meeting on August 14 in San Jose. So that's when an action will be taken. Today's hearing is information only, and it really provides us an opportunity to listen and receive public comments. So thank you all so much for joining us today. And anyone wishing to speak today, we ask that you fill out a speaker card. Tell us your name and who you're speaking, who you're representing. And if you're unable to attend, we'd still love to hear from you. So this hearing is being webcast, and the recording will be available online shortly. If you can't find it easily, please go ahead and call our offices. We have a brand-new website, and we're still working through a couple of hiccups, and we want to make sure that we do everything we can to make information available in the meantime. So give us a call at the CTC. And then the commission will continue to accept written public comments after today, and they can be sent to the address. We're going to put it up on the screen later in the day, but it's also up there right now where the comments can go. You can either email them, or you can send us your written comments to our headquarters in Sacramento. So with that, I would like to open up the hearing, so I'm going to pass it to our executive director, Susan Branson.
Just, I wanted to take this opportunity to provide a little background on the commission's role in approving a toll facility. In 2015, the legislature passed a new law which delegated to the commission the authority to approve toll facilities. This law is Assembly Bill 194. Assembly Bill 194 contains several minimum statutory requirements for the commission to consider for a toll facility application. For example, the project must improve corridor performance, such as by increasing passenger throughput or reducing delays, have a complete funding plan for development and operation of the facility, the project must be included in the constrained portion of the regional transportation plan, it must have, it must be supported by a project initiation document, and there must be evidence of cooperation between the Regional Transportation Agency and Caltrans. In addition to the statutory requirements, the statute gave, or provided, authority for the commission to approve guidelines that would guide the selection and approval of toll facility projects. These guidelines were approved in 2016, requesting applicants, in addition to responding to the statutory requirements, provide supplemental information with their applications. For example, information is required to be provided whether there is compatibility with existing and planned state and local facilities, information on maintenance assumptions and responsibilities, the timeline for completing the project, impacts on adjacent routes, impacts on air quality and other environmental concerns. Assembly Bill 194 also requires that prior to approving an application, the commission conduct at least one public hearing at or near the proposed toll facility for the purpose of receiving public comment. Today's hearing is being held pursuant to this provision of Assembly Bill 194. In addition, Assembly Bill 194 requires the commission to report to the legislature each year on the progress of the development and operation of each toll facility that the commission has approved under its Assembly Bill 194 guidelines. It is also important to note that after the commission has approved a project under Assembly Bill 194, it has no further rule in reviewing or approving changes to the project except at the request of the sponsor agency. For anyone wishing to review the complete text of Assembly Bill 194 or the, and/or the commission's guidelines, this information can be found on the commission's website or by contacting the commission directly. In closing, I would like to reiterate that today's hearing is informational only for the purpose of receiving public comment, and that the commission will continue to accept comments in writing via email, via the mail or email at the addresses listed on this slide. And for those of you here today, anyone wishing to make comments today, we do ask that you fill out a speaker card that's at the back of the room. You can see Paul back there. And with that, I will turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Susan. So with that, we're going to move to item three on our agenda, which is a project summary. So I'm going to ask April to come forward and begin our presentation. April Chan.
My name is Sandy Wong. April is sitting right there. She'll be up here in a second. Good afternoon, Chair Inman. Thank you. And good afternoon, Commissioners and Director Branson. Thank you very much for making your trip to San Mateo County to conduct this public hearing. And first, I would like to recognize the elected officials from San Mateo County who's sitting in this room, and then I'll invite Chair Alicia Aguirre to make a few remarks before staff will give you a project presentation. So San Mateo County formed an express lane joint powers authority. And the chair for that board of directors is Alicia Aguirre, and she'll be coming up in a second. Also sitting in the audience is Board Member Emily Beach. Emily, and she's also a vice mayor from City of Burlingame. Board Member Diane Pappin, she is the mayor of City of San Mateo, as well as we have the City County Association of Governments Vice Chair Marie John. So at this point, I'd like to invite Chair Aguirre to say a few words.
Let's hear it for all the young women, because there's a lot of women in transportation.
Thank you, Sandy. And talking about women in our council, there's six women and one not. And so we're really -- [laughter] That's the city of Redwood City. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Inman and Director Branson. Welcome to San Mateo County, and I know you represent the bigger, bigger picture of transportation, and you know just from getting here how challenging traffic is and what we've been working on, so we're excited to host you. And this is a newly-formed express lane JPA, and we, I'd like to actually thank the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, and also the City County Association of Governments of San Mateo County for their hard work in putting this JPA together. We worked very hard on making sure that all of the organizations and all the cities were represented, and all of the input that we've been able to get to move forward with this. I just wanted to say that on behalf of my colleagues on both of the TA and the CCAG who've come together to form this joint powers authority, we welcome you to San Mateo County. We look forward to moving this project forward. Someone asked me today, so when is it going to open? So this is, you know, one of many first steps, and I'm excited to see this happening. I think, as I listened to you say why, all the reasons why this should be accepted, I think we've checked off a lot of those boxes, and we know that it will be a benefit to all the constituents, not only in San Mateo County, but this is a county that passes through from many other counties for people to come to work in Silicon Valley. So we welcome you to San Mateo County, and we look forward to continuing to work and to have this approved in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Aguirre. So this project, while San Mateo County is growing, as you were making your way here, you might have seen a lot of construction work, and so is our traffic, it's also growing. So this project is really needed, and we've been asked by our customers to hurry up and get the project built. Obviously, we are working on that, and we also need your approval on the toll authority as well. So just to give you a little background on the agency relationships, how we're all working together to get this project going. City County Association of Government of San Mateo County is the congestion management agency for San Mateo County. Sometimes you hear the acronym of CCAG, that is us. And then the San Mateo County Transportation Authority is the authority that manages the half-cent sales tax in San Mateo County. So these are the two county-wide transportation agencies here, and we're partnering together on this project. And as Chair Aguirre mentioned, these two agencies recently formed a new joint powers authority specifically for the express lane project. We are also partnering with Caltrans and MTC on this project, and you will hear from all four partners today before we give you the very detailed project presentation. So, and this project has been a long time in making. Looking back, we started working on our very first feasibility study in 2011, and since then, the project has gained a lot more momentum and support from, all the way around from public agencies, private sector, as well as transportation advocacy groups. So the project has passed its environmental phase and currently in design, and parts of it is already under construction. So with no further ado, I'm going to introduce April to come up and say a few words, and then she will introduce our other project partners.
So I'm April Chan. I am with the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. Want to welcome the Commissioners and the public for this public hearing. Both Alicia and Sandy already spoke about the project, so our application to the commission is to be the toll authority over the facility. We are going to be working with our other partner, MTC, BFA, the Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority, to actually operate the facility once it's open for toll operation. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce two of our partners, one of which, one of whom Sandy originally introduced, and that's Tony Taveras. He's the District Four Director. I'm going to have him come up here and say a few words about the project. And then I'm also going to ask Andy Fermier, who is the Deputy Executive Director at MTC, who's going to be our operating partner in this project, to also come up here and say a few words.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Tony Taveras, the Caltrans Bay Area Director, and I just wanted to share a few words about this project. I really feel this is a model project for how transportation projects should be delivered. It really brought a lot of partners together, and we've worked very closely and collaboratively to deliver this project as efficiently, and it's been an accelerated project through the CMGC process. It's been a great partnership. We've had an integrated project team with Caltrans, as well as with the local agencies working together to deliver this project. And I want to thank the project teams for their hard work in getting us to this point today. This project could not have been made available without SB1 funds. And so a large portion of the dollars on this project are from the Solutions for Congestion Corridor Program, and it's helping us deliver some real-time congestion relief between San Francisco and the Silicon Valley. So the Caltrans has provided a letter of support to allow the JPA to operate this, and we look forward to a favorable decision by the commission moving forward at your August meeting. Thank you very much.
Andrew Fermier, Deputy Executive Director at MTC. MTC wears multiple hats in this Bay Area express lane network, and we're very supportive of this particular project and how it fits into the region's goals for moving more people in less vehicles. We have been a partner on the project at many different levels from the beginning, and we're extremely supportive of the work that's being done before and echo some of the comments that Tony made about partnerships. We do think that pricing is one of the best tools that we have to move more people through the system without just adding new lane miles, without really thinking about what we're doing. We look forward to operating the lanes consistently with the rest of the lanes in the region so that the travel experience is very seamless for the customer. As the Bay Area Toll Authority, we do run Fast Track for the region and do spend an awful lot of energy making sure that the entire state system works well for the customer. As, at the end of the day, that's who we're trying to improve there a lot. So I'm just here to represent MTC, saying we're very supportive of the project and this application, and can answer questions if you have some. Thank you.
Just a quick question for you. Is MTC a member of the JPA?
No.
So you're a separate transportation agency with the JPA acting in a separate capacity?
Yeah, I could complicate the answer very easily, but in simple terms, we're essentially the contractor for the JPA, but under the authority that we have as managing Fast Track for all the operators, we provide that service. But in this case, we are operating as a contractor for the JPA. We do also operate lanes ourselves in the three northern counties through authority that you gave us six or seven years ago.
And who, I'm sorry, I'm just amateur here. Who's the master planner, if you will, for the county for mobility transportation solutions, working with, obviously with Caltrans?
Well, for the county, it would be Sandy Wong. For the region, it would be MTC.
The agency, which is, that would be San Mateo.
One portion of the JPA.
Got it. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, so what I'm going to do now is, we have prepared a PowerPoint presentation to walk through the details of the project itself, and the project benefits, and how we meet the requirements of Assembly Bill 194. So I'm going to introduce the two speakers, who's also the project manager for this project. Nadal Tukhan, he is the project manager on, at the Caltrans District Four, as well as Leo Scott, he is the project, the co-project manager for the project representing San Mateo County. They will walk through the presentation, and then we're also going to introduce Jim McCray, who's from MTC, and is going to talk a little bit more about the role of MTC. I just wanted to clarify again. So the toll authority application is being put together by the San Mateo County Express Lanes Joint Powers Authority. We just recently formed this, effective June of 2019, just about a month ago. And we're going to be entering into a contract with BFA, the organization that Andy just talked about, and MTC BFA will be helping us to operate this facility. But we make the decision, San Mateo County will be making the decision on how this facility will be operated. So if I can bring maybe Nadal and Leo up here?
Again, my name is Nadal Tukhan. I am Caltrans Project Manager. And I really like to thank you for coming down to our district to share with us a great successful story. Actually, many thanks to you because of two things that helped us a lot, the passing of the SB1 and the CMGC that allow us to deliver this project. And this is a great accomplishment that we see in, you know, from CTC that help us on this work. I just want to go, Leo is going to go in depth with the project, but I'm going to let you some highlights. As a project manager, what really helped us to be successful? Actually, this is like Tony mentioned, this is going to be a good showcase of how a successful project can be delivered. And Tony and others mentioned the great partnership, and it cannot be any better partnership the way we did between Caltrans, CCAG, and San Mateo Transportation Authority. We were together from the very beginning. We have so much trust between us and the way we are delivering it. And what we accomplished there when we started the project is to have an integrated team, that integrated team where we have Caltrans team, and along with our consultant of the TA, where it includes Gray Brown and Leo Scott, who is the, he's the project manager, and then we have AACOM and Mark Thomas, who are working with us shoulder, side by side. And what's so special about the integrated team, we work together like if it is one design team. We don't look at each other like local or consultant, but we work together as one united team to deliver this project. And I give them a lot of credit, because when we start this project, and we propose that we're going to do widening on the highway, the first reaction, how are you going to widen such a facility with a very tight corridor? They were expecting like maybe $500 million just to be just for right-of-way. But they work their magic, they work their, you know, creativity in design to build, to design this project within the boundaries of the right-of-way. The other thing that we did is the speed delivery of this project. I remember when, the first day we met at MTC to speak about this project, and the goal was how are we going to deliver this project in a very fast manner? And there was a proposal how to deliver it in five years, thus between the environmental document and complete the construction. And sure enough, it has been like almost two and a half years, and we already have the first segment of the project under construction, south of Whipple. The other thing that helped us a lot is the CMGC. And really, you know, this is maybe one of the best examples that we are working with the CMGC contractor for scope control, for constructability. There are so many benefits that we found in having the CMGC contractor to work with us, Keywit, and deliver this project. And, you know, we were able to deliver the early package, divide the project into two segments, one of them now, southern segment, which is under construction, to be completed like about February, like almost in six months from now, and that will be the first segment that will be delivered. Following, it will be the second segment, which Leo is going to speak about the schedule where the rest of the project will be constructed. But in terms of, you know, even the cost of the project, we're working very closely with Keywit to see how it's going to work with the budget without exceeding the budget. And there's a lot of creativity in the value engineering and risk avoidance that make us able to meet the budget. So without going too much in depth, I'd like to invite Leo to come and speak about the details of the project.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I'm going to jump through a few slides here to orient you to the project, or at least give you a little bit of a briefing on the project itself, and then hand it over for a few moments to Jim McCray, and then we can answer questions as we go through or as you have them afterwards. All right, so as others have already shared, we're here this afternoon to talk about the application on the part of the JPA to operate a high occupancy toll facility, otherwise known as an express lane, on US 101 in San Mateo County, under the guidance or direction of section, code highway, code section 149.7, as amended by Assembly Bill 194. So I'm going to jump through three things, the description of the project, the requirement, how it meets the requirements of SB 194, and then the project benefits. So you've heard a little bit, but here's for you a map that shows on the southern end, the lower end of that blue line is the county line, Santa Clara County, San Mateo County line. The project begins there. There is currently an HOV lane in both directions at that point on 101, headed north up to Whipple. So the blue line ends at the Whipple interchange here in Redwood City. So that's the southern segment that Nadal referred to. The northern portion is the red line, starting at Whipple, and then heading north up to 380. That's the stretch where we will actually add width in order to create a new lane, and then that, the median lanes in both directions will be converted to an express lane. So when we finish the project, we will have a roughly 22-mile facility from 380 south to the county line. And at the county line, it will join with a facility that the VTA is currently constructing, which is converting their HOV lanes to express lanes as well. All right, the reason for this is because congestion, as others have mentioned already this afternoon, in the county is significant. Question?
Before you move on, can I, so you're staying within the existing right-of-way for the, for the entire corridor?
Yes, yes. We, the only, the only extension of right-of-way is in San Mateo, the city of San Mateo, and we're using frontage road real estate in the stretch of about, or width of about four feet.
Okay. How much shoulder loss is, is in the plan in segments?
Well, the narrowest stretch of the corridor is in the city of San Mateo, and we do have design exceptions for lane width and median and shoulder width in various stretches within San Mateo.
How far, what's the amount of exceptions that you're, you're doing that, and the length of them? So you're going from what weight and lit, lane width to what?
Standard, standard lane width, as you're familiar, 12 feet.
Right. And what are you going to?
So in San Mateo, north of 92, and it's not right at the 92 interchange, I'm looking at Nadal here for some of the confirmation details, about Third Avenue, I believe we shrink it to 11-foot lanes. And that carries through the peninsula interchange and up towards Broadway in Burlingame.
Okay. And on your shoulders?
And the median, the median width already in that stretch is a substandard two feet. When we finish, it'll still be two feet for most of that. On the outside shoulder, the outside shoulder, standard shoulder width is 10 feet. There are stretches north of Third Avenue where that will be eight feet, and one off-ramp where it will be two feet.
Is there provisions for allowing for wider areas for higher patrol, emergency vehicles?
Yeah, so there are three locations in the corridor, in the median, where we're creating width for them to be behind barrier, protected for observation of enforcement of the facility.
Yeah, thank you.
For the 900 feet, we only have, which is 900 feet for 22 miles. The rest, we can have enforcement in the median or in the shoulder.
All right, great questions. Feel free to ask as I go through. Congestion in the corridor looks something like this, actually, both directions. That's one of the significant challenges here in the corridor, is that we, we did have to look per statute at the possibility of doing a reversible lane, and that's not possible in San Mateo County because the congestion in the AM and in the PM is both directions. And as previous speakers have alluded to, jobs and housing, Sandy mentioned, are growing in the county, so the projections for traffic to grow are significant. And as we have met with the public throughout the last two and a half years, we have made mention of the fact that, while this is a significant project and provides improvement in the corridor, it's only one part of a bigger set of solutions to the congestion within the peninsula. So it's part of this set of projects, which include the Caltrain electrification, which Caltrain, Caltrain has underway now. Concurrently, Samtrans is studying the use of a regional express bus service to make use of the facility. MTC is looking at improving and increasing park and ride lots in the corridor to actually facilitate connection to those buses and other carpool-type services, which would then make use of the facility, the express lane facility. The municipalities throughout the corridor are looking at different TDM strategies to encourage high occupancy trips. And then our partners in San Francisco are looking at extending the facility And then our partners in San Francisco are looking at extending the facility from 380 north into downtown, so that would then make what is now 22 miles actually closer to 30, and then if you add Santa Clara, gets up to 40 or even 50 miles in length. And so those are, those are, all those projects combined are what present a collective or holistic solution to the congestion in, in the peninsula area. All right, so this particular project is looking at doing a couple of things. This is the project purpose out of the environmental document. We intended with the project to encourage carpooling and transit use, and that is largely achieved by improving the travel time reliability for HOVs and express lane users. By operating the facility as an express lane, it gives us the ability through pricing to maintain a speed at 45 miles an hour or higher for those in that lane. So those who currently drive the corridor in buses or carpools north of Whipple are in general purpose traffic. They reach the HOV lane today, in many cases that HOV lane is, is impacted, and so their trip isn't much different in terms of travel time than a general, than a general purpose or, or a single occupant vehicle. When we open the facility, it will provide a steady speed of 45 miles an hour from 380 all the way down to the county line for buses and carpools and toll payers. That will allow us to increase person throughput because we will have a higher occupancy, vehicle occupancy, through the encouragement of the use of the buses and the carpools. We will use technology to do this, the Fast Track technology and the communication technology to achieve it. That is intended then to reduce the overall congestion in the corridor because we will move people out of vehicles, single occupant vehicles, into carpools and buses. And we will finally minimize the degradation of the general purpose lanes. There will be growth in the corridor, so we will see growth in, in trips, but the idea is to get most of that growth in carpools and in buses. All right, so the features of the project that achieved, that will achieve that, the HOV lanes are converted to express lanes, as I said, south of Whipple. So that, there's no widening south of Whipple, it's simply a conversion of the lane from an HOV lane to an express lane. Then, north of Whipple, we will add width, and I'll show you a slide here in a second as to how we're going to do that. And that added, that added lane will then become the express lane. We will add safety lighting and overhead toll signing throughout the corridor, and as we've already said, no homes, businesses are being purchased because we don't need any right of way to achieve the project. All right, so strategically, the corridor has within it 19 auxiliary lanes, and I think you're probably familiar with how auxiliary lanes work, but just to make sure everybody in the audience is aware, an auxiliary lane starts at an on-ramp and ends at the very next off-ramp. It is not a through lane, and what we are going to do in order to create a fifth through lane is connect the auxiliary lanes through the interchange. And I, unfortunately, I don't have a pointer, so I'm going to come over here and do this this way. So currently, currently the auxiliary lanes start here, oh, I can carry the microphone, that will work.
We'll share.
Oh, I can use that. That's even better. That one doesn't want to come out. All right, so this, this slide here, this is the current on-ramp here. So what we're going to do is connect this aux lane back to this one to create a through lane. That gives us five through lanes through each of the interchanges, and then in most cases, we have to recreate the auxiliary lanes that we've used. So we're, the, the width that we need, and the reason for the narrowing through San Mateo is to give us the ability to actually put back the auxiliary lanes, which, which allows better flow of traffic on the main line, as well as it keeps traffic from backing up on the local streets. So that's how we're, that's how we're gaining the width in the corridor without needing excessive amounts of right of way. And I'll give this back. And then the equipment that we're adding is a series of signs. This is a, a series of signs that the California MUTCD, the Guidance for Caltrans on Signing, and, and those of us who design freeways along the state highway must follow. So you will, you will see the beginnings of these signs actually being constructed now if you drive south of here on 101. We will have a, a sign that gives the hours of operation, which, which will be a 5:00 to 8:00 PM, 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM operation. You will eventually see, you won't find these today, you'll see just the HOV occupancy signs out there, an occupancy requirement and the tolling requirement mounted on the, on the median. It will be a three-plus free facility. And then you will see the price through that series of signs, and that's when a patron would then choose whether or not to actually get into the lane to pay the toll for the, for the distance shown on the sign. And then some distance downstream of that pricing sign is actually the antenna that reads the Fast Track tag in the car that is used to actually bill the patron's account. So that, that sequence of signing will be throughout the corridor at various intervals in between interchanges to give the various patrons an indication as to what they would pay if they were to use the lane. So other drivers have the ability to choose to use the lane based on, on what the price they see. That would be a Fast Track toll collection through their tag, as I said, and then it will be dynamically priced. So the system will be monitoring the traffic in both the general purpose lanes, as well as in the lane itself, and the price will be, will fluctuate in order to maintain 45 mile an hour speeds or better. If the, if the price, if the speeds decline, the price would increase. If the speeds increase and there's volume in the lane, then the prices decrease to encourage patrons to make use of the lane. All right, the timeline for the project, as Nadal had made, mentioned, we have environmental clearance. We were, we were able to secure that in late 2018. And then the construction has, has already started in the southern portion of the corridor. So the, the way this diagram works, the southern schedule is on the bottom, so south of Whipple is the blue. So we started construction in March of this year. We will wrap up the construction towards this, this, the November date here is, it was our original target. Due to weather, we're now looking at February. And then the toll system implementation will begin in, in the latter part of 2020. We're targeting to open it in June or sometime in the summer of 2021 to match the VTA's schedule. So when we open, we'll be opening concurrently with the VTA, which will give us six miles in San Mateo County and another six or so miles in Santa Clara County. So the facility in 2021 will open with about 12 miles as an express lane, both directions. On the north segment, north of Whipple, we are just finishing now our PS and E, and so we'll be working with Keywit, our CMGC contractor, to finalize the costs associated with that work. And we're targeting to start that construction in January of 2020. That work will conclude two years later in the early part of 2022, and then the express lane implementation will be happening somewhat concurrently at the end of Keywit's time, and the facility in the, in the northern stretch would open sometime in the 2022 period, towards the end of 2022. How are we paying for it? So this is, this is the cost, and then I'll get to the, the actual funding sources. So the environmental, the environmental phase and the preliminary engineering was a $21 million effort, our design effort currently on target for a little less than $38 million. Right of way, because we didn't have to procure any right of way, was, was $2 million to address some, some minor access issues and utilities. Our construction management of the CMGC contract and the, and the work associated with that, as well as the management of TransCore, who is the BAFA contractor that will put in all the electronic toll equipment, that 40, is $41 million. And then the combined civil work, which is Keywit, as well as TransCore's work, that is all the electronics, that's about $400 million, 340, 394, 395 million. And then the right of way capital, that's the util, that's utilities, we're going to deliver for a lot less than, than that 17 there, and that money will, will be actually shifting to cover some other costs in the corridor. So the total cost at 514 is funded this way, $9.5 million in federal funds, and then on the state side, we do have some ITIP funds, and we have some STIP funds. And then, as we've already mentioned, the lion's share of the funds are the SB 1, local combination of the local partnership at 21 and a half, and then the $200 million, which you've approved a portion of for the southern segment totaling 200 million. There are regional tolls from the, from the Bay Area Toll Authority at 95 million, and then the measure, local measure here in Santa, in San Mateo County is 83 and a half million. And then we have yet to mention the fact today that we do have private sector partners that are contributing $53 million to the project. And they've actually, we've sent them their first invoice, actually, as of this week. All right, so how does the project satisfy SB 194? Fortunately, I think we've hit them all, this is a summarized set of them, I haven't, we haven't tried to go into every individual requirement of 149.7, but the, the high ones I've hit here. So the proposed facility will improve the corridor's performance, I'll show you that in a, in a second. I've explained how it will do that, I'll show you the numbers in a moment. The project is contained in the Regional Transportation Improvement Plan, which is our conforming regional transportation plan prepared pursuant to section 65080 of the Government Code. Then in addition to that, as you've already heard and seen today, this is a joint effort, integrated team, so Caltrans, the TA, and CCAG have cooperated extensively, and we can now add BAFA as a, as a partner with us on the project. Supplemental project study report was completed in June of 2016, as we started our environmental studies at that point. And the planned specification estimate, as you now know, are completed for the southern segment, they're being developed for the northern, and we do have a concept of operations to guide the, the electronic toll system development. So that is our satisfaction of the 194 requirements. And then I'll finish briefly with some benefits. We've talked a little bit about this already, the, the project, the express lane concept does encourage, encourage the carpooling, vanpooling, and transit use by providing a reliable travel time, a benefit over those that would choose to just use their car in the general purpose lanes, and would also provide the express lane continuity with San Mateo, with Santa Clara County, and then ultimately with San Francisco. It will reduce congestion and delay, we're minimizing the operational, operational degradation of the general purpose lanes through the use of these lanes. We're pulling vehicles out, we're pulling people out of the general purpose lanes and putting them in carpools and buses. That reduces the demand for the general purpose lanes, that's how we reduce and minimize the degradation of, of the general purpose lane congestion. And then we are going to, as I already mentioned, improve the travel time for all vehicles. It, it happens to be better improvement in the express lane because we can guarantee a travel time there, but by, by reducing the congestion in the general purpose lanes, we are also reducing their travel time. And as a result of doing all that, we're moving more people in the same space. All right, so the numbers at a very high level through the corridor, so this is both directions, both periods, peak periods in these graphs here. You'll see the vehicle hours of delay if we were to do nothing, which is a standard environmental requirement to look at, we would have something just over 100,000 vehicle hours of delay on a annual basis. And then the build alternative reduces that vehicle hours of delay. So that's the combination again of getting people out of single occupant vehicles into higher occupancy vehicles and thereby reducing the congestion in the general purpose lanes. The person throughput, as I've already mentioned, increases. So if we were to do nothing, we would have about a 600,000 person throughput. By making use of the express lane, we get an increase of just, just under 800,000 vehicles, people. And then in terms of vehicle miles traveled, so the vehicle miles traveled analysis here is looking at the entire peninsula, so it's looking at the parallel routes in addition to 101. And the reason for that is that the 101 corridor in its current congested state throws a lot of traffic off of that particular corridor onto El Camino, as well as, as 280, which are parallel routes through the corridor. And when we improve the condition on 101 through the, the adoption of the express lane, it draws vehicles off of 380 and off of El Camino back onto 101 because they get a better travel time. So what we're, what we, what we've seen through the modeling is that we get essentially a net zero change in the vehicle miles traveled within the peninsula. And that's significant because when we add lanes on 101 north of Whipple, we are going to see an increased number of trips, and we will see an increase in vehicle miles traveled on 101 north of Whipple. But again, because those trips already exist, many of them in, in the corridor, in the corridor, in the, in the peninsula, we're seeing that very minor bump, and so that's what's happening there. And then in terms of vehicle hours traveled, you see a slight decrease in vehicle hours traveled because we're creating a better facility on the 101, people who are otherwise traveling now in congestion get a better faster trip, and so we get a reduction in vehicle hours traveled as a result of the implementation of the project. All right, so last slide here for me, well, second to last slide, but specific to the project, public outreach that was done on the project. We have conducted eight public meetings. Through that process, we received 135 written comments. We've conducted three-plus stakeholder meetings with our cities. So the corridor touches nine jurisdictions, as well as obviously San Mateo County and Santa Clara Counties. We do have a current ongoing mailing update to over 200 subscribers throughout the corridor. We've had advertisement in six different newspapers, and we currently have a website hosted by Caltrans that provides information to anyone who's interested via the web. And then lastly, where we're going from this point forward here, we're looking forward to your approval of the application in your, at your August meeting. And following that, the JPA will be working on adopting a toll ordinance in June of 2020, as well as working on maintenance agreements with Caltrans and with BAFA. And then we will target that to be done well in advance of actually opening a lane south of Whipple in the June timeframe of 2021, and then eventually opening in October of 2022 in the north section. Question?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify for those in the room and watching the webcast, that the commission will actually consider this application at its meeting on August 14.
On 14, okay.
So I just, the meeting, the commission's meeting on, on August 14th and 15th, but we are planning to hold the, another presentation at the commission, meeting to consider public comment again, and then for the commission to consider whether or not to approve this application. Just wanted to clarify.
Very good. So read 15 as 14.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Jim McCray with BAFA, and he's going to talk briefly about how this fits into the bigger picture of express lanes in the Bay Area.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jim McCray, I work for MTC BAFA. I'm a principal there in the express lanes unit. So as Leo mentioned, I'm here today to give you more context of how the San Mateo 101 express lanes fits into the greater Bay Area express lanes network. So if you can take a look at the map here, this is basically what is currently planned for the Bay Area's express lanes network. You can see the dark blue lines are the express lanes that are currently in operation. You can see the 680 Contra Costa and Alameda and 580, as well as Sunol on 680 and Highway 237 in Santa Clara County. The Aqua color is, are the under-construction express lanes. MTC is working on 880 in Alameda County. VTA is working on an extension of 237. We also have, have on this slide the San Mateo 101 express lanes. Then we also are showing the near-term projects in red, those are projects that will be done by 2025, then midterm by 2035, and then long-term after 2035. So what you're seeing here is really a network of about 600 miles of express lanes. The three operators in the Bay Area are BAFA, Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, and Alameda County Transportation Commission. So basically, VTA is in charge of all of operating the express lanes in Santa Clara County. ACTC is everything in Alameda County with the exception of 880 and the approaches to the bridges. And then BAFA is responsible for 680 or the express lanes in Contra Costa County, Interstate 80 through the three counties, Solano, Contra Costa, and Alameda, and also 880. So when you're looking at the map, you can see that the San Mateo 101 express lanes is a very vital connection for the entire Bay Area network. As you can see, what we've been calling is this ring around the bay, so you have 880, 237, and then coming up the peninsula. And we're focusing on that ring mainly because it's in the congested core part of the Bay Area, and it also represents the first time that we're actually having express lanes connect into one another. So it's, it's an opportunity So it's an opportunity for seamless travel, and so it's also an opportunity for us to coordinate on our policies with the other operators in the Bay Area. And that's what we've been doing. So we've been having biweekly meetings with VTA and ACTC, as well as BADAF, representing Fast Track. And we've basically been coordinating on policies, business rules, anything that really is a face to the end user, because our ultimate goal here is really to have seamless travel for all express lane users in the Bay Area. So lastly, I just want to reiterate what Andy Fermier said. Even at the staff level, we're very excited about the project. I've really enjoyed working with staff from both San Mateo Transportation Authority, as well as CCAG, and I'm excited to continue to working on the project. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Yes.
You are adding capacity from 380 down to Whipple, and no additional capacity from Whipple south to the Santa Clara County line, correct?
Correct.
Do you have a question, Commissioner Dunn?
And the carpool lane, the HOV lane from Whipple south is degraded? It is constrained now? Underutilized, overutilized?
There are periods of time in its operation that, yes, it's degraded.
But not all the time?
It's not a continuous degradation.
It's not something that Caltrans would say, "We need to move that up to 3+ immediately"?
Not, well, I'm not sure what the latest grading is of it, but it is closing in on that state, and in order for it to perform consistently well going forward, it will have to be a 3+ occupancy.
You're proposing 3+?
And we're proposing 3+, yes.
For the toll or free?
Yes, yes.
But right now, is it?
Right now, it's 2+. That's correct. And then, if we, but what we found in the modeling was in, the modeling was for 2020, that we were approaching that limit. If we were to open it as an HOV 2+, it would be impacted.
And are you going to require a ZEV vehicle also be a carpool? Zero emission?
Oh, zero, zero emission. The current thinking within the Bay Area operating community is that the clean air vehicles and the HOV, or HOV, the two-person vehicles would be discounted, most likely at half price.
What do you do today?
Right now, there isn't a policy in force for a differentiation. So right now, HOV 2 is free, because we don't have an HOV 3+ facility that's an express lane right now in the Bay Area, and clean air vehicles are free.
So part of the challenge we've had is maintaining that speed, and on some of our pilot projects in the south, because of the stickers, they don't control enough of the variables to keep that speed. So you're saying that you will, do you have to carry legislation to be able to require carpool on a ZEV sticker?
I'm not sure if I'm, I can answer, I may not be the full answer here, but I can give you the thought process, and I'm going to back up for a second. If we were to leave the 2+ HOV requirement for the 101 facility, when we extend the facility as a, and make it a much longer facility, we're drawing more 2s into the facility, and what we found in the modeling was that the facility would max out or hit the 45 and decrease in its operation, such that we would have to transition to some other mode, which the only option we would have is nothing but carpools. So we'd have to throw off any toll payers, and we would be at the mercy of however many were there on the performance of the lane. So in order to be able to guarantee travel time, we need to have a 3+ occupancy, and then the question was, well, what do we do with a two-person and a clean air vehicle? The decision has been to discount them, but have them pay a toll.
Thank you. On, express lanes are designed to increase throughput, totally get that.
Yep.
At some point down the line, do you anticipate excess revenue after your partners are paid off, after costs are paid off?
Yes.
And where would that excess revenue go?
That, I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn that to the representative of the JPA, because the revenue becomes the revenue of the JPA.
The JPA.
Yeah.
Yes, that is.
I know the answer.
So yes, the San Mateo County Express Lines JPA will be the body who adopts expenditure plans for the revenues.
But it goes local, it stays local.
Yes, we totally understand what is required by law, and that, what is eligible expenses in, for example, direct expenses for operation, administration, maintenance, enforcement, and any net excess revenue will be stayed in the corridor, and that JPA board or director will be the body who makes that decision.
So just one quick question. You said your operating hours are going to be 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
What happens at 8:01 PM?
What, the...
It would be open for all.
Yeah, it's open for all.
So it's free?
It becomes free for a great amount of time.
It becomes a general purpose.
Right, and that, what's...
I'm assuming Southern California not allowed to do that.
I don't know. Okay, just checking.
Well, yeah, one of the details we haven't mentioned is this is a fully continuous access facility on 101. So when you drive it today, the current HOV lane south of Whipple, you can get in and out at any location. There's no buffer, such as in Southern California. It will continue to be that way even as an express lane. The other part of the vision we haven't talked about today is that the ring around the bay that Jim referred to, 880, 237, 101, would all be operating 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and they would all have a 3+ occupancy requirement. That's the vision, so that gives that seamless consistency around the bay.
And I'm going to have one transponder or one app on my phone for the consumer?
Yep, one Fast Track tag is all you need, provided that Fast Track transponder is a switchable tag.
Oh, that's not good. That's, you can exchange.
Which is a problem in Orange County with the tags.
We already have them in effect in the Bay Area, so that, the Fast Track Customer Service Center is already distributing the switchable tags.
And everybody has one?
No, not every, a lot of legacy tags out there. There's far more legacy tags in circulation than not. But they're easy, they're easy to get. You can trade in your current legacy non-switchable tag for a switchable tag.
I'm going to bring my transponder up here.
They're moving to electronic tags, not...
Right, well, so the California Toll Operator Committee has agreed to move to a new technology, 6C technology is the reference, and those are the so-called sticker tags. But they still, you still have to have a switchable tag in order to gain free access to the lane.
Okay, well, we do not want to dominate all the questions, so I would love to open it up to the public. Do we have questions from the public? Yes, please come forward. Yes. Okay, did you, do we have a speaker card filled out? Okay, then please come forward. Come on up. Okay, yes, please, just so the recording can pick it up. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, I have come a little late to the game, but that's because I have been involved in my own city of San Mateo traffic program. I am one of the 10 neighborhoods. I am in north-central, which north-central is from Third Avenue, 101, to El Camino, to Peninsula Avenue in Burlingame, El Camino. It's been very difficult, because we are at the end of your project. We will be there 2025. We constantly ask our city not to continue building condos. We don't want to look like downtown Redwood City. We have homes in the area I just described to you that are over 100 years old. We have families, whereas schools are impacted when there is an accident on 101 going south. They literally come off of Peninsula Avenue, go down our streets, which are literally one-car streets. Unfortunately, we can't get the city to change their minds about making it two ways. Takes 45 minutes to get from El Camino down Second to Fourth onto 101, when there's an accident on 101. I also am a grandmother of a daughter, a granddaughter, eight and a half years old. My granddaughter does five different sports, primarily on 92, and one in Redwood City on Bay Road, ice skating. I can tell you how fast we're going any time of the day on 101, north, south, whatever, because I also have two part-time jobs, one in San Mateo on Hillsdale Avenue, and one on Redwood City, El Camino. I appreciate all of your personal time in this matter, but honestly, can we work with the cities? The VTA bus goes through Hillsdale Avenue, goes through Foster City, it's not full to pick up people to go to Oakland or vice versa. The Sam Trans, the KX, which runs along El Camino and then gets on to 101 going north to San Francisco, including the airport, is not full. Caltrans electrifying it? Well, let me tell you, folks, we are fighting them because we don't want their workplace right in our backyards where you're building condos in the tune of about 10 tall buildings, and the homes alongside it can hear everything. And I have to be honest with you, the new, I don't know what development you're in right now on Third Avenue and 101, I can hear you every morning between 2:00 and 5:00 in the morning. I live on Third and South Fremont, two blocks from the freeway. So even though you're in the beginning of this phase in the Whipple corridor, I need to tell you, 92101 has got to be answered. We can't breathe. All of the congestion from Whipple up to Ralston, I can tell you, that's the backlog, Ralston, all the way up to the airport. And the lady who's in the back who's from Burlingame, we're trying to work with everybody, but as you know, Facebook is coming in our backyard on Coyote Point, and we're terribly worried about it. Those people who live in the flooding areas, Coyote Point, they're already seeing too much traffic. So please, take an effect, and don't just work one area at a time. Think about your neighbor on the northern end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a second speaker?
Will? Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Will Grasswich, representing the Bay Area Council. We would like to voice our support for the Joint Powers Authority application to operate the toll facility. The Bay Area Council has been a longtime supporter of the 101 express lanes and managed lane projects. We've supported AB 194 and SB 1, and we believe that the Joint Powers Authority will provide a wonderful partnership in operating the toll facility alongside MTC and Caltrans. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other speakers? My fellow commissioners, any other questions, thoughts, staff? Well, then, I guess we will close the meeting, but I do want to thank you for coming and for participating, and if you're watching us online, or you're going to watch us a little later, please give us your thoughts, your comments. We truly appreciate hearing from each and every person. So with that, we'll, meeting's adjourned.
Susan, Mr. D. If I can just add, we will be here should any member of the public show up. I will be here to take comments and make sure that the commission receives those comments. So thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so I shouldn't have adjourned this?
Well, no, you can adjourn, but I'll be here to take comments.
Okay, so we're kind of adjourned, but we're open to hearing from all of you, so thank you.[1709.43]